Mr. Wrenfroh?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Presentation of the executive board.
Before we do that, there's a question that comes from the audience. Anybody else have a question they want about tonight's meeting? If so, bring it up at this time. If not, you'll have the open mic at the end where there's no limit to the type of questions you can ask. There is a three-minute time limit there. Let's hear it again. Ms. Gary? Ms. Gary?
Yes. I have questions on number nine, eleven, and eighteen. Number nine?
Nine, eleven, what's the third one?
Eighteen. Question, I have anything to do with this thing about income. I wanted to know, why does the amount to be award? Is it a loan or a grant?
All right. Do you want to take one at a time?
Yeah.
All right. The well, if we have, the first one is, for Linden is $1,540,571, and it is a grant.
It's a grant, so you don't have to pay the money back?
That's correct. And for the Kennedy Park is $1,101,894.
May I just say, one really much?
One hundred, one thousand?
One oh one.
Eight ninety-four.
Eight ninety-four. And what was it for the other one, the one?
The other one was $1,540,571.
Okay, so I know that those were lower than what they requested. Is that right?
Yeah, I believe that is correct. But one of the agents, well, one of the committees that was selected, thank the former on the public now.
That is the maximum allowable. Sixty percent of the request is the maximum allowable.
Sixty percent.
Request a little more.
Okay. All right, that was number nine.
Yeah.
Number, what was it? Eleven?
Eleven.
Had to do with the pilot agreement for Linden Knowles.
Technically, it's not a pilot, it's due to public housing finance law, but it's chapter thirteen. Mr. Mike Cerito, if any of you will represent him, is available if you'd like to come to the mic specifically.
I understand it's not technically why this called a pilot, but it is basically a payment in lieu of taxes. And they just have a fancy name here, real estate tax modification stabilization agreement. I wanted to know, who negotiated this deal?
It was done through the P R B, so far.
From the B ready firm?
Yes.
Mr. Justine. Okay. So they wrote up this agreement. Are you aware that at the Linden Knowles hearing before the zoning board in 2012, Mr. Cerito stated that this was, first of all, was not only not the low-income project, but that it also, and I could quote, he said, "So this isn't low-income housing. This isn't housing on a pilot project. We are not asking for any tax rebates from the village or the county. Project will pay its share of taxes." And that was in 2012, where they declared that they were not going to get a pilot, were not going to get tax abatements. And now they're coming forward as what tax abatements. So I also noticed that they said that there were some type of services that the village was going to give, and they were going to pay for these services. But the contract, whoever wrote this contract looked out exactly what services they were talking about. So do you know what services the contract doesn't say?
Mr. Cerito, would you like to tap into the mic?
Yes. If you'd like, I'd like to explain what's going on with Linden Knowles, so that you understand why this tax modification plan. Well, you asked two questions. You said, first of all, that this was not going to be a pilot program.
No, I said that you said it was not.
Oh, that was a representation of what was made in the zoning board. That's true, this is not a pilot. What's occurred, let me finish, please. What's occurred during this period of time, since the project was built in 2015, is that 2016, the project had a $400,000 tax bill. And that was a bill that was a little over what was going to be considered by the project to be something that they would have to pay on an annual basis. But it was being paid. Then what happened is the taxes jumped to over $600,000 for this project. And what happened then is that sursiaries had to be taken every year to reduce it to a level that was something that the project lived with, and something that made sense would respect the value of the building and comparable to the taxes that were being charged. But every year, sursiaries are gone, and the taxes go down every year from six hundred, back down to the four hundred level. And the next year, the taxes go up to six hundred and fifty. And the next year after that, sursiaries taken, and they go back down to the four hundred level. And the next year, they go back up to $650,000 again. And then the sursiaries done, and they come back down to the four hundred level. So what's occurring is, the taxes are always remaining at that four hundred level after the sursiaries have been done. But the only one making money on this deal, by the way, is the attorney. Because what happens is, Linden Knowles got to pay that six hundred. That six hundred has to come out of the operating fund, and then they get that money back, the last thirty-three percent that the attorney is taking from the taxes that it's saving on an annual basis. So from these three spikes here, the cost has been over $150,000 to the facility. So where else would we do, just have a ten-year tax modification plan that modifies the taxes and increases them on a level that makes some sense, rather than going through these spikes and dips every year? That's the first issue with respect to why this is done.
Hey, lie down there.
The second issue with respect to village services, we are entering into an agreement with the village over and above this pilot program, or this modification program, that pays the village 100% of what their taxes would be through a services agreement. The services the village is providing is all the services that they provide now. And the village will be compensated on a 100% level of what they're getting now from Linden Knowles as a result of this structured deal. So there really are two contracts that have to be signed. One, dealing with the modification of the tax plan for the next ten years, and another one with the services agreement, where Linden Knowles is agreeing to pay the village so that the village loses no revenue from this modification plan. And what it does is, it saves the project, because otherwise, every year, it's really a deficit, and can't make itself out of hole. And this is one of the major reasons. I hope that answers your question.
And then, Ms. Cerito. Gary, can you, thank you, Gary.
No, that doesn't answer my question, because, number one, by being technical about the use of the word pilot, is that this is not a pilot. That's a misrepresentation. This is exactly the same type of thing as a pilot. And you say in here, when you applied for this, that there would be no tax rebates, and that they would pay their full share of taxes. That's what I said when this was, when the zoning board agreed to give this variance. And I don't understand why it seems, that developers seem to think that they are guaranteed a profit. If they have to take a loss, let them take a loss. And I also know that the owner of the property is Mr. Florrie, who owns Under Terrace Avenue, and he also owns the Campbell Park area. And I think he should take some of his profits from these other companies and run this as a business, and understand that the village should not have to compensate him to guarantee profit. That's not the system that we live under. And yet, this is what this seems to be all about. And I do find, I don't think that he's correct when he says the village services are the current services, because that would have been in the pilot, that would have been in the village payment, which is all the other type of tax pilots. They just put it in the village category.
Ms. Gary, we interrupted you, so certainly you have more time, but I think we better get on to your third item before you three minutes.
Well, I'm sorry that you don't seem to feel that this is important enough for the people that you need to know that.
You've made that impression, that's not my, uh...
Well, it is. When you start, when you give, when you give an attorney time, when you give an attorney the time, as much time as you want.
We've borrowed Ms. Gary, and we're giving you the amount of time that we allocate to each of you.
Okay, I think it's very unfair.
Thank you.
Okay. The other one is on the budget, and the last item, on the, it says, you know, the bills, the meeting bills, and the sub-its, and then it says, "In budget transfers and budget amendments." Are there budget transfers and amendments that are included in this amendment?
Of course, yes.
What are they?
Well, the one that I'm aware of is there is a budget transfer so that we can make the pension payment at the end of the year.
And what about the budget amendments?
I'm not around with the amendment, Mrs. Gary, they're not, they're part of the bills, so they're not having to make the amendment.
Well, why aren't they delineated? I mean, this is a public meeting, and people are supposed to know when there are budget transfers and when there are budget amendments. That's supposed to be done in public. And, I mean, you're doing it in public, but you're not letting the public know what you're transferring, and what the amendments are. And I think that's very illegitimate, right, to cooperate, when you're supposed to let people know these financial matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Winston?
Madam client.
Thank you. Adam Turley wants to go into executive session for one night. There is going to be two executive sessions. One is going to be held at this time, and the others will be held at the end of the meeting, so we're not leaving, we're going to do it long. I maintain a motion to go into executive session.
What is it, what is it about?
Litigation, open lit, litigation matter.
It's a litigation matter. It has to do with the concern for independent living versus excessive. We have to make a decision. Can I, in motion?
Yeah, sorry, it's on.
I'm asking for a motion to the executive session. Madam client? A second, please.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Wrenfroh?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes. We'll be back in a minute.
Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Wrenfroh?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Does the board wish to approve the matter that was discussed in the meeting session? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Wrenfroh?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Presentation of activities of the public bodies. But that's a hidden part.
I'd give everybody a second. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor Ryan, deputy mayor, trustees. The Park and Recreation Commission did not have a meeting in November, because we did not receive any correspondence from the community requesting the use of the facilities at Hempstead Parks. But I do want to personally invite you guys to the grand opening, the ribbon-cutting ceremony Saturday at St. George's Church, beginning at five o'clock. They're opening a Deja Joy in the youth center. The hours of operation will be Tuesdays and Fridays from three to seven, and they're also having steel band lessons from five to seven. So I do hope somebody from the board will attend. Thank you. Also, I want to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you.
Want to leave a note?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mayor Ryan, deputy mayor, trustees.
This is the activities report for the Human Relations Council for the month of November 2018. November 1st, the Village of Hempstead held its annual student government day. Students from the Hempstead Public Schools, along with charter schools, grade five through twelve, were invited to Village Hall to learn about village government. The students were allowed to shadow village officials and department heads to monitor the daily activities of each particular department. The students also participated in a mock board meeting, which I must say, to all of us that are here, children are very observant. The children spoke about quality of life issues that were concerning village government, as well as the school board, mayor, deputy mayor, trustee Johnson, they all participated. Did those children surprise you, or did they surprise you?
They were great. One of the people who asked the question was a school teacher, said, "The traffic guy gets the school late." So the trustee said, "Leave earlier."
Thursday, November 15th, the Village of Hempstead held its annual veterans appreciation luncheon. Veterans that reside in the community were invited to receive a free lunch, as well as entertainment, from the American bomb shows. This is a way to thank the veterans for their service to our country. Tuesday and Wednesday, November 20th and 21st, the Village of Hempstead held its annual turkey giveaway. Thanks to our sponsors, the village was able to provide turkeys and fixins to over 500 needy families and senior citizens. I just wanted to invite everyone to our annual tree lighting tomorrow. It's here, in the courtroom at 4:30 PM. Also, I encourage everyone to go to our village website and subscribe to the community calendar, where you can view a schedule of meetings and all the events that's happening in the village.
Thank you.
Mayor, any questions for the campaign board?
Good evening, mayor and trustees.
Good evening.
We have a meeting on November 26th, and the following resolutions were passed. Remove all tenant parking dropout signs along the south side of West Columbia Street, from 30 feet west of Main Street to 300 feet west of Main Street. These were no longer needed, there was a daycare there, and it's not there anymore, so they're no longer needed. Install no parking 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM signs along the south side of Atlantic Avenue, between Cathedral Place and Garden Place. Install a no parking midnight to 7:00 AM sign with an arrow pointing north on the east side of Warner Avenue, 50 feet north of Pennsylvania Avenue. Install a no parking midnight to 7:00 AM sign with an arrow pointing north on the east side of Warner Avenue, 80 feet south of Pennsylvania Avenue. Remove the two-hour parking sign with an arrow pointing south on the east side of Warner Avenue, 50 feet north of Pennsylvania Avenue, and replace with a two-hour parking 7:00 AM to midnight sign with an arrow pointing south. Remove the two-hour parking sign with an arrow pointing north on the east side of Warner Avenue, 80 feet south of Pennsylvania Avenue, and replace with a two-hour parking 7:00 AM to midnight sign with an arrow pointing north. Install a school speed limit 20 miles per hour 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM school day sign on East Marshall Street, 100 feet east of the east curb line of South Franklin Street for eastbound traffic. Install a school speed limit 20 miles per hour 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM school day sign on East Marshall Street, 100 feet west of, west curb line of Nessau Parkway for westbound traffic. Remove the school speed limit 20 miles per hour sign that is posted on North Franklin Street, 50 feet north of Center Street for northbound traffic. Remove the school speed limit 20 miles per hour sign that is posted on North Franklin Street, at a point opposite the south curb line of West Columbia Street for southbound traffic. Install a school speed limit 20 miles per hour 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM school day sign on North Franklin Street, 102 feet north of the north curb line of Fidel Street for southbound traffic. Install a school speed limit 20 miles per hour 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM school day sign on North Franklin Street, 175 feet south of the south curb line of Jackson Street for westbound traffic. Install a school speeds on ahead sign. It says S for, on the north Franklin Street, at a point opposite the south curb line of Kellum Place for southbound traffic. Install a school speeds on ahead sign on North Franklin Street, 162 feet north of the north curb line of Fulton Avenue for northbound traffic. Install an end school zone sign on North Franklin Street, 64 feet north of a point opposite the north curb line of Center Street for southbound traffic. Install an end school zone sign on North Franklin Street, 100 feet north of the north curb line of Fidel for northbound traffic. Install a no parking here to corner sign with an arrow pointing west on the south side of West Columbia Street, 90 feet east of Main Street. Please note that regulations shall take effect when signs are marked and given notice of their posted, respectfully submitted.
Thank you.
How the committee like the issue well. Happy New Year, and, you know, we will not have a meeting in December, but of course, the next time we meet, we'd be at Christmas Day. This is not a good time to leave.
You can't ring it?
Huh?
You can't ring it Christmas time?
No, probably elsewhere.
Could I, do we have a copy of that?
This?
Yes.
I give it to her, and she'll make out easily.
Thanks.
Additionally, Hempstead Post 290 will be having its tree lighting on Sunday at 6:00 PM. You're all invited to come. And anybody here who wants to come down and watch us like a tree, we'll welcome you. Okay, thanks. Oh, no questions, right?
Have, can either of us come forth, your side? I come before you with two pieces of paper. You were busy last week. Good evening, mayor, board, and trustees. The planning board met on November 19th at 6:30 PM. Present Rashid Walker, LeWitt Brown, then with Dean, Marcy Turner, and Anita Pettis. Also present Sharice Vanderhall, counsel, and Michelle Banks administrator to the board. The acceptance of the minutes was moved by Anita Pettis at the meeting of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 15th, 2018, be dispensed with and accepted as reviewed, seconded by LeWitt Brown, all were in favor. The following cases were approved. Case number 720, 213 Front Street, for site plan approval of T R U's dental care. Case number 731, 711 Fulton Avenue, for site plan approval to install additional Palm Island and two 15,000 gallons underground tanks. Case 733, 495 West Minnesota Boulevard, for site plan approval of neighbors' pack and share. Case number 738, 692 Fulton Avenue, for site plan approval for interior alterations and new facade. Case number 742, 71C Main Street, for site plan approval of Leo's Barbershop. Case number 743, 50 Fulton Avenue, for site plan approval of National Wireless. The planning board went into executive session with Sharice Vanderhall Esquire and Kenneth Gray Esquire and Michelle Banks at 8:01 PM, and session ended at 8:57 PM. The planning board went into another executive session with Sharice Vanderhall Esquire, Kenneth Gray Esquire, and Michelle Banks present at 10:00 PM, and session ended at 10:10 PM. The following cases. Case number 583, application of block 37, requesting an extension of time for the site plan approval expiring on 11/29/18, on premises located at southeast corner of Fidel Street and Main Street, be approved. Extension granted until 11/29/19. Application, case number 584, application of block 38, requesting an extension of time for the site plan approval expiring on 11/29/18, on premises located at Main Street, Fidel Street, and West Columbia Street, be approved. Extension granted until 11/29/19. Application of block 39, requesting an extension of time for the site plan approval expiring on 11/29/18, on premises located east of Main Street, north of Fidel Street, and south of Kellum Place, be approved. Extension granted until 11/29/19 with a condition, 90 days to file application to request calendar for I D A board and R X F R to pay the entire balance of the water and sewer study. This will be null and void if not met by 90 days. Application of 586, application of block 42, requesting an extension of time for the site plan approval expiring on 11/29/18, on premises located at Kellum Place and Union Place, be approved. Extension granted until 11/29/19. And I have to say that we had Kenneth Gray counsel here, present, which indicated to us that by law, we have to grant this one-year extension, that it's, you know, it would've been directed somewhere. But he read the legal law source, that they only granted, they're entitled to one extension only. There being no further business, a motion was made by Chairman Pettis to adjourn the meeting at 10:45 PM, seconded by Rashid Walker. All were in favor, the next meeting would be on Monday, December 17th, 2018, at 6:30 PM. Thank you. Merry Christmas. We work overtime.
We're not going to face one.
No, we're not going to face that. Reginald Lucas from the Citizens Association.
We have nothing to report, Mr. Dan.
Sharice Anderson had nothing to report at this time, but we have Thomas Thompson, our permission of community development agency.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just to sum a report on ongoing activities, with respect to the federal opportunity zones, we're working in the process of developing a local strategy for our two opportunity zones in our downtown area. With respect to the Empire State Poverty Reduction Initiative, also known as ESBRI, we'll be holding our grand opening of our Community Empowerment Resource Center on Wednesday, December 12th. The hours of operation of the center will be Monday through Thursday from 9:00 AM to 4:45 PM, located in our suite at 50 Clinton Street, Suite 504. Safe routes to school, construction of the A B G S Middle School in Jackson, Maine, are in the final phases of design approval, and construction is slated to begin in the summer, be completed in the summer of 2019. The Brownfield Opportunities Area Public Meeting has been rescheduled for Wednesday, January 23rd, in the lower level of the library, beginning at 5:30 PM. We strongly encourage all residents, and extend the invitation to the mayor and trustees to participate in this very important public meeting, to allow us to get a designation of our certain downtown areas as a Brownfield Opportunities Area, which will position us to receive additional state and federal funding. Main Street pedestrian sidewalk enhancement project is well underway. Phase one is scheduled to be completed this month. Phase two, including the water feature tree planting, paving of streets, and benches will be completed in the summer of 2019. Three local residents have worked on the project, and have received specialized ocean training and flag, flagger certification training. Two remain on the project throughout. The local initiative support coalition grant, the balance of the funding will be allocated toward housing quality improvement programs. We will have a specialized code enforcement officer will be hired on a contractual basis and supervised under the building department to focus on the management of zombie homes throughout the village. Zombie Homes Initiative, C D A, is working in cooperation with the Village of Hempstead and Nassau County Land Bank to acquire and rehabilitate vacant and abandoned properties within the village, to remove blight, and creation of affordable housing for current and future view of village residents. view of village residents. Vacant properties may also be acquired for housing development under this initiative. Hempstead Community Land Trust, um, organizational meeting, preliminary organizational meeting has been held. A public information session will be held in January and the first annual meeting and election of officers will be held in February. We'll have solidified dates at the January board meeting. Memorial Sloan Kettering, the CDA has been working with Memorial Sloan Kettering to identify local contracting opportunities and will be focusing on food services, dry cleaning services, and landscaping services. We'll be making a joint, uh, presentation with the Uniondale Chamber of Commerce to the procurement officers at Memorial Sloan Kettering who are, um, made a commitment to engage local contractors whenever feasible under these areas initially. Um, with respect to the sewer study, the sewer study update has been completed by Cameron Engineering that will allow us to go back to the state and proceed with our grant application. Um, I should note that the updated estimate has now reduced the cost, projected construction cost from eleven million down to eight million dollars. That's all I have to report this evening.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason why it went from eleven to eight? I mean, I know it's likely a stupid question, but...
Well, number one, um, the counties, so the original study was done in two thousand twelve, pre-sanding.
Okay.
There have been, um, significant improvements with the county's, uh, portion of their sewer construction improvements over the last several months.
Mm-hmm.
And so they worked with the county's improvements and identified what gaps were in there and it found that the county improvements, um, then reduced the cost, direct cost that would be for the, um, village hookups to the county improvements. So it's a three million dollar reduction, we're delighted with that. And so with the five million dollar grant plus the commitments by the local contractors, I should say developers, who have earmarked their fair share in presenting significant, um, funding toward infrastructure improvements, we should be able to cover all the costs under the eight million dollar budget.
Okay, I, I have another question for you.
Yes, sir.
Not related to that. Zombie homes?
Yes, sir.
Are in or abandoned homes, is there a time limit as to how long these houses are allowed to stay abandoned or boarded up? I couldn't find anything.
So, as far as my knowledge is, there's no limit, but depending upon the ownership, they can be fined daily if they're not maintaining the properties. And we're working actively to identify opportunities to acquire these properties. Uh, we are currently, um, looking to a joint, into a joint grant application with the Nassau County Land Bank to acquire some of these properties to redevelop them as affordable housing. So as, based on my knowledge, I don't believe there's a time limit. Uh, there just has to be, uh, provisions put in place to be able to find them on a daily basis if the houses are not being maintained.
I found a few for you.
We, we have an active list and I'm working very closely with Dr. Easley, so we'd be happy to take that list off so we can prioritize.
Okay.
Any other questions this evening?
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Christian Castilla, electrical board.
The mayor and trustee of village residents, hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. And I wish you a happy holiday season, uh, for the upcoming month. Okay, um, last regular meeting was held this past Thursday on November twenty-ninth, included a Thanksgiving holiday. Members present were Mr. Castilla, electrical inspector, myself, Mr. Dmitru, Mr. Castilla. Absent were, um, Mr. Kim Yemi and Mr. Pazlowski. Uh, we had acceptance of the minutes of the past meeting, uh, on a motion and all in favor applicants to take the exam. The following applicant was approved to take part one of the elec- electrical licensing exam, Mr. James Owens of Hicksville, New York. Um, the following applicants passed part two of the licensing exam are, and are eligible to take the oral exit exam, Ron Ebbel of Oceanside, New York, and Arthur Martin of Lindenhurst, New York. Okay, the following, um, applicants were present to take your oral exam and recommended, uh, to the village board for their, uh, electrical license to be issued. Leonardo Guern of Merrick and Diego Pula of East Elmhurst, New York. Recommendation is made by Mr. Dmitru and seconded by myself that these two applicants rec- are recommended, uh, for electrical licenses from the village. All in favor, none opposed. Uh, following applicant took part one of the licensing exam and failed, Russell D. Francesca of Rockwell Center, New York. He did not pass his exam. He has to wait six months and he can retake it. Okay, we have discussion on all licensed electricians who will need to complete eight hours of continuing education units for the next license renewal, um, um, cycle, which will, uh, begin two thousand, end of two thousand nineteen. So a letter's gonna go out in January of two thousand nineteen notifying that everyone has one year to complete it, uh, before they get the reissued, uh, next year's license. Uh, next meeting is scheduled for twelve twenty-seven at four fifteen PM, um, respectfully submitted. Have a nice holiday, everybody. Any questions? Questions, no?
Same old question. Is there something we can get after the Hempstead residents that...
We, we, we have discussed that, um, we, we don't give classes, we're not teachers. Um, we, you know, you have to have a license to teach, um, for even electrical. So there's, there's courses available, there's a place in Lindenhurst that's very good. Actually, most, we, we ask the people who have them, they take their tests, most of these people are taking, uh, Copec, um, Electrochemical Training Center. And because they're set up to teach it, they have, um, facilities to do wiring and do the practical work that is, is required to, uh, get any knowledge.
Is that on all levels, from the beginning or all the way?
From the beginning all the way up to master electrician's, the pay is, they can master electrician's license.
What's the cost?
It's, uh, Electrochemical Training Institute in Copec, South, South Toparar is the, uh, is the owner of it.
Do you know what the cost is for beginning?
It's pretty expensive. Probably two, over two, well over two thousand dollars, probably close to three thousand.
No, just to go from the beginning of the, like, if you're just walking in off the street, so to speak, all the way?
Basic electricity.
Yeah.
Um, I, I could, I could get that information.
Good night.
Sure. Sure, and I'll maybe bring, I'll bring some of my brochures from there. All right?
Is there any way within range transportation to Copec for village residents or...
I mean, what we were talking about, I know the village has a bus with recreation, maybe they could, um...
Give us some facts, when it, they have to go and the timeframe.
Okay. Okay, I believe it's two nights a week they have to come with them, two nights a week or a week, or during the day.
I'm just gonna say for what period of time?
Excuse me?
For what period of time, two nights a week?
Um, I, I'll get, I'll get the information, I'll bring it back next.
I also noticed a lot of people work on other people's licenses that are left.
Under, under, um, law, you work under a master electrician's license, your workers don't all have licenses.
And how do he come back and inspect it if they cover it up? How do they work?
Well, when, the, nothing gets covered up before there's a rough inspection. Well, open walls have to be inspected first and they get, they...
So they all out? The question is, uh, they all out? Do you use somebody else's license?
No, we don't, you have to be employed by the master electrician, you can't cover somebody else's job.
That was my question, so the answer is no?
No, that does not happen.
Okay.
And we, we are very strict with that, we have to.
Okay, you have to work for that company.
You have to work, you're working on, yeah, anybody who works for a licensed electrician and gets paid, is on the payroll is, is covered by the master electrician. Okay? And the master electrician has to supervise it and, you know, come around, look at it.
So the answer is no?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Kelly, a quick G from the post board?
Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, everybody doing all right? On November twentieth, we had the regular meeting of the examining of the water plumbers was called order approximately four fifteen PM. Members present was Donovan Cashfield, Ross Steinhardt, and Kelly McGee. We corrected the written and the drawing part of the first, uh, polling exam with Dennis Treejo, uh, Trio. Uh, Dennis scored a fifty-six on the written and a sixty-eight on the drawings, uh, failing the exam. He will have to wait six months in order to retake the exam. We also corrected the exam of Rene Reyes. He scored a fifty percent on the written and a fifty percent on the drawings, also failing, and he will have to wait another, an additional year before he can, uh, retake that exam. Uh, then we had a brief discussion on state and local codes. There being no further business at that time, the meeting was adjourned at approximately six PM.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
What is the passing grade on?
Uh, seventy for all three parts, seventy on the written, seventy on the drawings, and seventy on the practical. Uh, originally, they used to combine them and have, uh, you know, it was seventy-five and the board talked about it, and the board felt, you know, you have to have, you know, get a seventy on each one. If you get a ninety on a practical, then you can get a thirty on a written and a thirty on a theory, you know, so we made it seventy for all three parts as a passing grade.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
You have a happy Christmas.
You have a good Christmas. Thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor Ryan, Board of Trustees and everybody. Um, during November twenty eighteen, the activity, my activity has included the following. Um, I responded to a call and email from Leah Stone, a descendant of, uh, Richard Denton, after whom Denton Green is named. Uh, she had arranged a meeting with Shirley Si, the current secretary of Christ First Presbyterian Church, to learn more. That church is gonna have its three hundred and seventy-fifth celebration next year. I have donated a text version of the material that I wrote for the mayor's exhibit to the Archives of Austria University's Long Island Collections Department, as well as to the Hempstead Public Library. Um, in mid-November, I met with Carolyn Janace, an ethnology student at SUNY Purchase, who's doing a senior project on school districts in Nassau County. She graduated from Holy Trinity. We met at Hempstead Public Library and, um, I gave her information. I've joined the Nassau County Historical Society. My goal is to write articles for the journal of the Nassau County Historical Society that will elevate Hempstead Village's historical profile, and I'll be learning more about Hempstead's history from other sources. Um, on Monday, December third, a seventy-five-year-old former villager named Marie Hartman visited Village Hall. Her father-in-law, RJ Hartman, served as a Hempstead Village trustee for ten years, nineteen fifty-six to sixty-six. Uh, she said she knows you, Mayor Ryan. She went to s-
I'm a lot younger now.
Well, she graduated the same year as you, on the same day that she was a student.
You're my age, boy.
Anyway, it was interesting, she donated photos to the library and then we continue to communicate. Um, and she also, um, I'm sorry, she also accompanied me and three employees from the Nassau County District Attorney's Office. They came in and they had a little tour of the mayor's exhibit, um, and expressed further interest in it and in having walking tours. And I won't be able to do walking tours until my hip is replaced, which is December seventeenth.
You said Marie Hartman?
Huh?
Marie Hartman?
Hartman, yeah.
Very well known, yes.
Okay, yeah, she said to all her friends.
She lives on Bedell Street on October seventh, and she was a safe girl.
Yeah, that's it. Um, I, so she'll be in and out. She enjoyed coming. So anyway, um, I don't know what will happen with this, I know it's only supposed to stay up through the end of the year, and I, I guess we'll be, um, just figuring out what, where it would end up. Um, so while I recover from my hip replacement, uh, I'm just gonna be continuing archiving the materials I collect, and I'm hoping to do, be able to come here, go downstairs and, uh, photograph a lot of the minutes all the way up so that they can be made digitally available to other historians, because there's a lot of stuff down there that applies to the whole county. That's it, that's it. Thank you. Resolve that upon recommendation of Senator, Deputy Mayor Spurk, that a vote from EC by approved to give to the regular meeting from November twenty, two thousand sixteen, you are allowed.
I move that the, uh, reading of the minutes from the regular meeting of November twentieth be dispensed with and accepted as approved.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Cheryl Jackson, police officer wishes to report that Mayor Ryan and Deputy Mayor Ryan will have approved miscellaneous hack licenses as a leader. Here go a Iranian thirty-six-year-old place in St. New York and panela El Casa, twelve ninety-nine Corporate Drive, Westbury, New York. This item here is admitted, we've already had it on the meeting on the early part of October. A healthcare man who got weekly screening at the school H R B, this has gone through incentive for disease control. It was meant October nineteenth. It has been extended to be, uh, approval of the Hempstead Police Department to December thirty-first. They will be on James A. Garner Way in Station Plaza, Tuesdays ten AM to four PM, Wednesdays two PM to eight PM, Thursday twelve PM to seven PM, Friday eleven AM to six PM, and every Saturday twelve PM to six PM. And they help surveys the mayor, he, and he came by his authorized attitude to the center payment on behalf of the village's, of the, uh, president of the city's administration as acceptable to the village attorney. Thank you. Move. Second. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that the recommendation, the deputy village clerk that authorization is hereby granted for the regular scheduled meeting of the board of trustees on Tuesday, January first, two thousand and nineteen, at six thirty PM, be reviewed on Wednesday, January seventh, two thousand and nineteen, so as not to conflict with New Year's Day holiday. Move.
Second. Oh, second? We're not meeting in either? At your house.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Our corporation council member, Amal Desaw, has decided to pull this item for the AKN two LOC, be admitted to the agreement. So we're gonna skip down to the next item. It's a long attachment. The water plant, this item is ratified, um, the Environmental Facilities Corporation awards for both Kennedy Park and Laurel Avenue. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Ray Colain, controller, and Michael Superstaman of the water plant, that the board trustees hereby approve the acceptance of the awards for both Kennedy Park and Laurel Avenue to the Environmental Facilities Corporation, which is required for the project from the state following time. Move. Second.
I have a question, are you gonna tell the public the amount of the water grant?
You stated earlier the, um, events.
I can repeat it.
The, the grant for Laurel Avenue is one million five hundred forty thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars, and that is a grant against a project cost of two point five million, two point five six seven, six hundred and eighteen dollars. Kennedy Park, the grant amount is one million one oh one, eight ninety-four, against a total cost of one million eight thirty-six, four ninety.
How much money are we saving?
Uh, we are saving about two point six million dollars.
Prior to the vote, I, I, I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in, in getting this grant from the water department, Bob Bowles, Mark, uh, everyone on the board. I know it was a, it was a point of contention when we first presented to the public to actually get the bond approved. All along, we needed to get the bond approved in order to apply to the, to the water, revolving water fund, and we did that and it worked, and we got back two and a half, two and a half million dollars in total. So I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in that, that's a big win for the village.
All said, we all agree. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of a combination of, for, of the Mana Gada County hundred eight nine nine six, whereas the county of Mana Gada has previously become the best qualified vendor for the two thousand and two international semi-four hundred fifty ten, and steel, uh, combination... and steel combination body as more fully set forth in the specification annex two as exhibit A. And whereas the village Hempstead has the ability to bring back off the county of Anadaga, contact eight nine nine six, bid resolved, enticing set forth exhibit A. Now, therefore, it is stalled by the mayor and the board of trustees authorizes the purchase of a new two thousand and eighteen international seven four hundred in accordance with the specifications annex two and the bid pricing of the county of Anadaga, contact eight nine nine six. And whereas the two thousand and nineteen serial bond includes the above vehicles, the treasurer is authorized to advance the funding required for purchase and set the equal from the general fund for the advanced via reimbursement of the two thousand and nineteen serial bond bond.
Move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Just remind everybody, if you have a question for the open mic, this would be a good time to bring that question forward. Thank you, sir.
Legal department, Linda Knows, real estate modification. It's all that upon the recommendation of the board of trustees of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, authorizing the execution of the real estate tax modification stabilization agreement by, by and among the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, Linda Knows Residence Housing Development Fund Company. And whereas the Village of Hempstead herein, the village desires to purchase sufficient supply adequate state and standard building accommodations properly planned for persons of low incomes. And whereas Linda Knows Residence Housing Development Fund Company in Anotaku Eleven, New York, not-for-profit corporation, the HDFC, is the owners of the real estate property located at two sixty-one South Franklin Street in Hempstead, in the Village of Hempstead, County of Nassau, State of New York. Herein the property for the purpose of maintaining a housing project for families of low income consisting of one hundred units of housing for families of low income. Thereon herein the improvements and whereas the HDFC has been formed for the purpose of providing residential mental accommodations, thereon residential accommodations for families of low income. And whereas the HDFC is a housing development fund company as the term is defined in section five seven two of the PHFL and section five seven seven of the PHFL, authorizes the village board to modify and stabilize the real property taxes. And whereas the HDFC will be willing to improve into a real estate tax modification stabilization agreement whereby they will make an annual payment to the village school and county central meeting presented to this board for approval. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the village board hereby creates to modify and stabilize the real property taxes of the property to extent authorized by section five seven seven of the PHFL approves the proposed agreement between the village and the HDFC and substantially deformed presented at this meeting, provides for annual payments as set forth in such agreement and is further resolved that upon the HDFC, the mayor of the Village of Hempstead, hereby authorized to execute the living of four hundred and three on the behalf of the Village of Hempstead. Any motion?
Anybody wish to make a motion on this? Move.
Second.
Question?
Yes.
So we're aware that the, obviously know the location of, of the property and what's going on in and around there. We understand that there's how many square feet of commercial, if you would, space or community space in the basement of the building?
About six thousand fifty-dollar community space.
And how much of that is used by the daycare?
It leaves the whole thing.
The whole thing, Chris. I was told the daycare is under program. There's not that many kids involved.
You know, I was just speaking to a gentleman who runs a daycare center just down the street from us, but he actually told me today that he took four to six of the overflow from, from the daycare centers. That's different news than I'm getting. I understand that it's mostly used by people who live at the project and use the daycare center. But other people in the community also know that it's being used and so on. I think it's being pretty well utilized from my understanding.
My inquiry to Peter Floyd and that we got a different response. And the curiosity here is construction about the latchkey program available for three to six South Franklin, the Percy Jackson Center. And looking for an alternative setting that people maintain that program and things don't respond better might be, this could be an in-kind type of contribution.
I was on the way to keep an eye on your conversation. That would be a wonderful figure to look at.
I can speak.
I was remembering to that.
Good evening, your honor, and village trustees. There is some additional storage space in Linda Knows, which I know the mayor was interested in Percy Jackson occupying, but they've never come to look at that space. And we did call their attorney, but she never returned calls to me at that time. And that's why we, fair enough, thank you.
Is that the same, is that included? Is that part of the six thousand square feet that we're talking about?
Yes.
Is that part of the?
There's about four thousand extra square feet
Right.
that is available in the building.
And the basement?
In the basement.
That's what I was.
It's a storage, it's a storage. It's empty storage space, which is possibly it could be used for.
What's the, what's the condition of that space?
It's simple conditions, a brand new construction.
No, but it's storage space. It could be unfinished. Is it unfinished space or is it?
No, not currently unfinished. There are some finishing that is required.
So, so, so as part of the residential services agreement, would, would you guys agree to include it in that to put to a twenty thousand dollar earmark the, the maintenance of Lincoln Park, which sits adjacent to your property, diagonal to that property, as part of this?
I couldn't speak to it possibly.
My client, my client would pose me, yes.
So, so we would need to revise the payment schedule inherent to include the additional twenty thousand dollars in the residential services agreement and have an earmark for the maintenance and continuous build-out of the services of Lincoln Park.
Twenty thousand, but where would that payment, because this is a payment schedule, where would that pay?
As part, it would go into the residential, yeah, be a village payment as it goes into the residential services.
Would we go into the village's general fund to be allocated or would we make a payment directly?
I have to go to the.
I have to go to the.
I think so.
I suggest what we do is we modify the village services agreement.
Correct.
That, that would be right.
I must move to vote.
Trustee, trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
No.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Larry Love's person of age that the board of trustees hereby approve the bid number eight eighteen and be two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen roadway repair for Harriman Avenue, Eldridge Avenue, Andrew Vine Avenue and Eldridge Place. That bid number eight be rejected that was submitted by roadwork ahead due to being significantly over the four hundred fifty thousand, ten-dollar budget for the project.
Second, but I have a question.
Actually being rejected. They went over. If you look at the second page of the attachment, they submitted the bid for six hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Okay.
Which is totally over the amount that it suggested.
It's forty-four point eight six percent of the funds.
Is that normal? Of course, I've never seen us approving rejection of a bid.
Larry Love suggested reject.
We're going to be rejecting the bid. That's what it's to reject because you have, they made a bid and now we have to reject their offer.
Right, but I've never seen that be a board approval to reject the bid. I mean, that's part of Larry's.
That's required, it's required.
And then what we.
When I say what.
Because they made a bid and now we have to act on whether or not we accept their bid.
So it was the bid, you're saying the bid.
It's not a bid.
The bid that, the original. Well, the original bid was something like one hundred fifty thousand and they came in at six fifty-one.
Right.
So what we're doing is rejecting the bid.
We're sending back out. Okay, so.
But not today. We're just rejecting the bid. Today rejecting the bid, the plan is to send it out.
But in, in the bids that I've read in the past, it always provides little room to change the streets that are named in the bid and that, that the money is going to be used there.
I think, I think this bid was specific to certain streets.
The ones that, I'm thinking of a bid, specific bid, that had specific streets in there as the ones to, to be paved that were subsequently changed. So I'm concerned about approving the rejection of a bid because when you bid, how do you know, you know, you gotta know what you're bidding on, right?
So states that Harriman Avenue, Eldridge Avenue, Andrew Vine Avenue, Eldridge Place will be these streets.
Why not Crochet? We have the same street.
I have an opportunity, open mic.
Last seventeen, you said we're going to have it done.
No, no.
This is horrible.
Fact that you're yelling out.
You have the open mic.
Mr. Neal, you have an open mic. You have an opportunity as a.
Sir, please be out of my face. I heard you. And I'm like, you step aside and now, now he's talking. Yes, I will. Yes, I will.
Please.
So please excuse me.
Mr. Neal, if you don't want.
It's my, my site, sir.
And we have a meeting to.
That's my site, sir, excuse me.
I just moved to vote.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Larry Love's person of age and reject that the board of trustees hereby rejects bid number eight eighteen and be two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen for roadway repair for Eldridge Avenue.
Harriman.
For Harriman Avenue, Eldridge Avenue, Andrew Vine Avenue and Eldridge Place that was submitted by roadwork ahead due to being significantly over the four hundred sixty thousand, ten-dollar budgeted for the project. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you for your patience.
Make sure that one gets in the.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Stacy Harvick, the center and Lisa Bastian, the district director of the community sources hereby to be appointed a position within the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, Dante Hughes, ninety-nine, James A. Garner Way, temporary part-time department assessment title, labor salary fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents an hour except for December fourteen through December twenty, two thousand and eighteen.
Let's go.
Any second?
I will second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The next four items. There's a personnel item, it's replacement of a vacant communications operated position in two thousand, in the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget line. It's all that upon the recommendation of Paul Johnson, Chief of Police, that the board of trustees hereby approve the appointment of position with the Incorporated Village of Hempstead. Javel Harrison, ninety-nine, James A. Garner Way, Hempstead, New York, part-time police department, school crossing guard, fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents an hour upon civil service approval. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Paul Johnson, Chief of Police, the board of trustees hereby approve the appointment of a position within the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, Jaskin Jones, ninety-nine, James A. Garner Way, part-time department police, title school crossing guard, fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents an hour upon civil service approval. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Paul Johnson, Chief of Police, the board of trustees hereby approve the appointment of position within the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, Tyrone Clever, ninety-nine, James A. Garner Way, Hempstead, New York, part-time department police, title school crossing guard, fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents an hour upon civil service approval. Any second?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Paul Johnson, Chief of Police, the board of trustees hereby approve the appointment of position within the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, Allison Anderson and Co., ninety-nine, James A. Garner Way, Hempstead, New York, part-time department police, school crossing guard, fourteen ninety-one an hour upon civil service approval.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
It's all that upon the recommendation of Ray Colain, village controller, that all needs to build, including self-insurance funds, emergency transfers, budget divestments, ordered by the board of trustees on chess bar and games, simple for the approved as three cases we give. Any second?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Memphro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We'll now go to the open mic. I think the conclusion of the open mic, we're going to go back and do a secondary session. There are non-voting items that are going to discuss with the personnel and major. And one of you is the very end, so if the people don't want to stay, obviously free there, it's believed at that time. But I have an answer, questions that will be asked. And first, I'm going to ask a question for you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, a leak is, the library budget has not gone down. It's constantly gone up, increased. The service has gone down. We're the only community in this area that's not open on Sunday. All the other libraries are open one to five on Sundays. It's not us. Our parents, our families work Monday through Friday and will need laundry and house cleaning and shopping on Saturday. When do they have time to help their children with their projects? And as we know, children normally wait till the day before school, the night before school opens to say, I have a project this June. How, they can't go to library in Hempstead. We're a public transportation community. Why should we have to track to another library and we have this one here? The price is that we still pay a higher budget, but the service has gone down. Why is that? The second thing is the red light camera money is, is it's two, over two million dollars we got? Did you see yesterday's year's debt? It's at over two point two million dollars that the Village of Hempstead received. So I know, I find that what, no, it said village.
Village.
It said village.
The village.
It said village. They specified the village. It said village.
Is the mic where you comment?
We don't get red light money.
We got, no red light money. No, no type, no ticket, no ticket money. So Perry, I guess like they lied on you in New York City, lied on the village in New York City, okay?
Another question about the library. You mentioned that Sunday is an open date.
One to five. Both libraries, all the libraries, Uniondale, Garden City, Rockville Center.
That had to be a misprint because we don't even have.
There's another topic.
They all, East Manel, they all open one to five on Sunday. How come we're closed all day Sunday? Our budget has not decreased. We still hire the same amount of people, if not more.
Just help me out a little bit. The libraries that you were referencing, do they close any time during the week?
No.
Okay.
No.
Let me bring it up.
Only in the summertime, which we understood our libraries to close on Sundays in the summertime also. But now we're closed Sunday, twelve months a year. Our school district is in the bottom five of the state of New York. Our children need to be in the library to get as much. Our children need to be in the library to get as much information as they can. Not everyone has internet, not everyone has a computer, not everyone has printers or ink. So we should be there to serve the community, because that's what it's there for.
Thank you.
And the last thing is, okay, we talked about the red light, the camera, Crookshank Avenue. Yes, I know that you guys rejected that, but Crookshank has been there, Frank and I talk about it every year. We, uh, Crookshank is the fifth street that has that type of surface that Angie Vine and Harriman and everyone else has Eldridge. Why would we list off that bid?
All right, let me, let me get to us this, Frank, for a second. Where's Crookshank, do you all come in and listen?
If, if we're gonna do cement roads after this bid, it'll be out for the next bid.
Which means after this bid, what makes, this bid gets more traffic, Crookshank gets more traffic. The only fruit street out of all those streets, we get the trucks, we get ever buses, with all the parades, any traffic is detoured, it comes to Crookshank. We get more traffic on Crookshank than Angie Vine, Eldridge, and Harriman combined. Why must we wait? Every time a truck hit that pothole in front of my home, my home shakes, I can be laying in my bed thinking it's an earthquake happening. This is ridiculous, so why a major road has to wait to have the secondary roads get done? Why is that? What, we don't have enough rank, because we don't work for the village? Because we're not a minister of a church? Because we didn't stay at your house? I mean, what's going on here? Why, we don't rank? Why must Crookshank be waiting to? Frank, why must Crookshank wait to after? Who submitted it? Because you and I had conversations every year, and you said Crookshank is gonna get done when the other streets get done, and it has not happened.
Here's what happens, after every budget season, I sit down and I talk, you're the mayor, okay? And maybe a trustee too, they come to the budget meetings, and we set up a list of votes. The numbers that equate to whatever we're gonna equate to, come to it. If they wanna add for next year, we can add that vote on to when we finish.
You should come out and see the Crookshank, go, come see the roads that's sitting up here, come drive through and visit Crookshank and visit the others, and see how much traffic we get versus they get.
Uh, Mr. Neal, some of the entrances are unfair, misleading. I understand the need to read the street and believe that that is a respectable question.
But it's not being, it's not, we're not being treated respectfully.
The litany of why is, is not accurate.
Well, you tell me why, I'm asking why.
No, I'm saying, and, and reasons.
A major road, a major road, why was it cut off?
No, no, I'm not arguing that, I'm saying the reasons you gave them.
Yeah, but, but what's the reason why?
No, no.
Angie Vine, no, they said we was not gonna get lea- um, street sweeping anymore. Angie Vine got street sweeping, I called Frank, Frank was off that day. I, I'm, I'm home all day, I saw the street, why, because he's a minister, he's worked here. I take taxes just like everyone else.
My point is that you suggested that we argue on the other streets for a variety of reasons.
That's right.
Unfair and misleading.
No, it's not a thing, not gonna see the street.
You mentioned somebody living at the house.
Yes.
Their house was broken down.
I understand that.
So, it's complicated that during a period of distress, it had nothing to do with future benefits for structure better.
Okay, well, explain the rest of it then. You wanna pick that one thing out that I said.
Well, but I only because of its home, literally, and figuratively.
So why they get street sweeping and the rest of us don't, they said, oh, it, it's gonna happen periodically on some streets, but not all. How does that street get it, and the rest of them don't?
Fair question.
Frank wasn't there that Thursday, as I called. Shirley told me, Shirley, that's what Shirley told me, Shirley Martin.
Okay, thank you.
Shirley Martin expressed that, so we're gonna check this, see why Crookshank wasn't on the list? And how will I find out for the answer?
I'll have to vote.
Okay. We have the number four eight one six five five five.
Four eight one?
Six five five five. Now, you also said the red lights, that was not true, in New State, right? There's a contact New State tomorrow, toward the office, you said New State. And the library, how would we gonna check it too, why we, why we had another one signed up?
As soon as possible, we can go on the seventh way, if there's something after the hours, that it was blocked.
But what is we need something? Okay, I'm sorry, traffic tickets. It's traffic tickets, Hempstead, it's two point two. It's, it's traffic tickets, so, so where's the money for traffic tickets for two point two million? That's a lot of money, so it's gonna increase our taxes, I hope the taxes.
I hope, you purchase the, the con for Nancy.
That's part of the budget each year.
Yes, but is it normally that amount?
Yes, roughly, it runs between one point nine and two point two.
So that's, that's normal, what you're saying?
Yes.
So anyway, we can verify that, a foil, that, you can give me the information for the last five years, in a foil?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, no problem. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Turkey, I just, I have a card, I thank people, not Turkey. I was, I wanna say, um, in light of people losing their job, we're hiring a lot of people in Hempstead. And I wanted to know, as trustees, you all know what the budget looks like now, we made in December? Because, um, I know Lowe's seems to go out of business, Lowe's closing down, and, um, we're hiring, but what do we, what have you guys come up with in regards to saving the village money? So I'm, that's one question. And in addition to that, I wanna know, um, why aren't we encouraging? We have all these major, um, national county, town in Hempstead, that's in our area. What are we doing to encourage it to shop in Hempstead? Especially during the holiday season, not just saving them the parking. You know, we have things, we have V.I.M., we have different, you know, places we eat in Hempstead. What are we doing to encourage it? And what are we doing to encourage other businesses to come in Hempstead? Because we have places here, we have vacant places, we have, what are we doing? Not just have business places building, apartment builders, but what are we doing to encourage businesses to come to Hempstead? I wanna see something that come up, we need to have a committee of people that live here, that like to be here, I like to be here. But we need to stop fighting, and let's come up with some ideas as trustees and people that live here, we have a good C.D.A., we have things that's looking forward, I think that we need to come up with ideas, because we need to have a, a card maybe to encourage to shop in Hempstead. There's certain places I go to get my wigs and my, my product, encourage the people that live here, you know what I'm saying? Come up with an idea, a discount card, you shop here, encourage the businesses to put a sign up to support Hempstead. Because I'm tired of not supporting, tired of striking one another. And our police department, how are we monitoring the people who answer the phones? Is there a monitoring system? Who is monitoring them when they answer the calls, that's what I wanna know. And he answers tonight, do you all know where our budget is right now, as trustees, or are you looking at the budget, how we're spending our money? Are you meeting with him and finding out where we are a quarterly? Uh, is he reporting to you where the budget is and how we're spending the money? Are you getting in with the parking heads and finding out how they're spending money? Because I think that's important, because you don't wanna do a forensic audit, so I'm gonna get someone to help us, but we need to find out where we are financially, because the, the country about to bust. We're gonna bust, I don't want the Village of Hempstead to be in shock in Omaha. So we need to be good stewards of the money that you're getting from the Village of Hempstead. So we just gave a pilot to a not-for-profit organization, we have people that live in those buildings, so I'm concerned about that, but we need to be good steward of our money, and that's why we voted for the owners who that's up there, even if you didn't vote, you still need to be good steward of our money.
Thank you, a- a- as in terms of the police of this, um, actual time, we can play it back, try not to discredit, if that's what you're suggesting?
I'm not, I'm not even, I'm suggesting that there are just not all, not all people, not all operators discourage this, but some are, but I think that there should be some monitoring being done, and not just, just if someone discourages, but I think in general, there should be some monitoring being done of phone calls.
Well, and they were within the airstrike of the office of the desk, so there is monitoring constantly going on.
I think there should be a monitoring system, chief, I think that you should look into where, like, how they monitor people in jail, there should be a way that you could call phone call and listen how they're talking, speaking to those residents. Because I think that some of them feel that they can talk to us anywhere, in jail.
For the, the phone call, the conversation's recorded, so if you have a specific complaint about somebody, you could play it back. Other than that, the lieutenant is sitting there, he's not listening to what you're saying, but he can hear their responses.
And I think that sometimes when we call in and we say something, people feel they're gonna be retaliated against when they say something, and I think it's up to the lieutenant, sometimes we're too friendly with the people we work with. In general, I think there should be someone else monitoring, other lieutenant, that monitoring those phone calls, because if they feel like, if, as I'm a village resident, I'm gonna feel like if I reported that the police department is going to retaliate against me, and I think there should be a monitoring system in place to listen to those operators, because some of us feel, uh, disrespected on a, on a daily basis.
If there's a retaliation, I'm driving to District Attorney's Office.
Well, I don't, I just think that in general.
That's correct.
I think that we, there should be a monitoring in general, even in, in regards to.
But, but, I'll say now, priest, listen please, because you're talking about budget, hiring people, now you want somebody to sit there.
Well, no, I'm just saying, you're chief, and we have, we have.
Let me finish.
Go ahead.
The original lieutenant within the airstrike, all of the comments are made by that, that suffices. If yours is specific, we'll play the, take action, and we'll be able to react accordingly. Okay, two general statements for us to be able to follow.
We live in a society.
Let's leave that one alone though, because we have.
Okay, we'll talk later.
Okay, and the budget, the process is beginning, it's always beginning, the trustees are assigned to different departments. They are allowed to sit down with the head of the department, help with preparation of the budget, and they can accompany that person when they sit down with ready to go with the final numbers.
How often do you, I'm saying to you, as trustees, you are over a trustee, we trust you over our village money. How often do you sit down as a group of trustees and go over the village budget?
They do it by department, each one of them is assigned to a different department, and the reader's charged with keeping us within the gap.
So if there is a, um, if someone is spending money in an inappropriate way, how do you know that as a trustee?
We'd have to pick it up through the, the charters reports when we compare the numbers, we're not gonna know it instantly.
So how do you know?
We have the numbers from last year and this year, and they have to be comparable, we share, and what the fuck is large?
So if that department's been doing it for a large amount of years, several years, how is that picked up?
By looking at comparisons from the eight years. Uh, priest, for go with courtesy, we need to watch other people away.
Okay, so, so my question in regards to how are we going to increase spending our dollars, making our dollars in Hempstead as, as a.
Uh, you, you referenced the fact that we have a community involved in Hempstead, and I think the priest has attention to some of the additions, uh, they're taking, including the fact that if you go to that office, there are resource tabs right there, and you can make your suggestions, that's what it's there for.
My time is up, sir, but the time that you're gonna answer questions, trusty Pettis, that's okay, but thank you.
Terry Winston?
My name is, uh, Terry Winston, I live at fifty-five forty, Road Hempstead. I have a question regarding N.I.A. statement. Uh, the question is regarding, um, sidewalk. Um, here, I guess we paid the sidewalks and, um, doing, uh, things to, uh, let, uh, amplify the street. Between Main Street, uh, and Fulton, and, uh, what's the name?
Main Street from Truck to James A. Gawnaway.
Well, what's, what's the name of that?
From Truck Street to James A. Gawnaway.
Well, does anybody inspect that, that work?
Does a person sign through the C.D.A. that is inspecting the work?
Well, they need to get out there and inspect it, because they wanna really crack the joint. They need to get out there and inspect it.
It's not finished.
I know it's not finished, but what I've seen so far, it's, it's horrible. It's like they're using cheap materials, or they're just not doing the work right, but they need to get out there and look at it.
They are out there.
I was out there on, uh, Tuesday, so when did they get out there?
They were been out there since the.
They been out there? Do you know the person that's, for the C.D.A. that's in charge of that? You don't know?
No.
So how do you know they've been out there?
They were signed to be out there by the C.D.A., that's their job.
Okay.
They sign their name, and they being there is, that was the harm.
All right, so you answered the question, and it was still lying, the time. Still lying. So, since nobody's watching, I'm gonna start with my statement. Pilots are not needed in the Village of Hempstead, and anyone who thinks as such is negated. Their sole existence is for the purpose of creating an environment of constant poverty and unemployment. If the owner of Lenny Knows, who is also the smug owner of one of the Cherish Avenue, cannot make a profit, that's his problem. It should not be my responsibility or anyone else in the village to support him. Furthermore, this pilot, or any other pilot for that matter, shouldn't be entertained by this administration. As long as this administration continues to cater to the status quo at the expense of the residents, this village will never move forward. And everyone's entitled to their opinion, so if you don't like it, that's too bad.
Good evening, trustees, Lord and Mayor.
Good evening.
Um, my first question, of course, is, uh, is any, uh, new improvement for the shot spotter? Are there any, um, cameras, uh, with the shot spotter, and, you know, uh, was it already installed, that it's gonna be installed? Um, give me an update on the, uh, violent crimes that happened in the last two weeks. Let's ask that, with that. I think, um, first, uh, of a drug overdose on, uh, one of the Cherish, do all, you all know about that?
Yes.
Okay, good, I'm glad of that, because, uh, it was a young lady, she was, she was down with the overdose. And we're supposed to have a low thing on drugs in those Hempstead. Or am I, I'm correct again, that, uh, we're not doing a high, high drug thing in that Hempstead? Um, anyhow, I'm glad that there's been no, uh, shot incidents in the last, uh, two weeks. So maybe through the Christmas holidays, there'll be no more shot incidents, thank you so very much. Uh, did you answer the question?
All right, as far as the shot spotter goes, for the last two weeks, we've had, uh, six shot spotter alerts with two confirmed shootings.
I can't hear, um, the chief, uh, we have people on the outside.
Blue, talking please, this has seen, thank you.
So we've had, uh, six shot spotter alerts with two confirmed shootings in the last two weeks. Uh, it's really a relatively low number for the number of shot spotter alerts. As far as the.
Excuse me, uh, would you say that was gang related, or there was something to tap into this incident?
Uh, one of them we believe was, uh, there was one person shot, we believe was self-inflicted. And the other one was, uh, allegedly a robbery attempt. So, that was it as far as the shootings go.
Now, uh, are there any, uh, cameras, uh, new cameras that's gonna be installed with the shot spotter?
There are no new cameras yet, uh, we're working on a grant, we're trying to get, uh, a few more cameras, um, and license maybe this. But that grant money is probably maybe six months away before we actually get our hands on the money.
I thank you for that report, because the holiday is coming up, and I hope that, uh, we have zero the next two weeks. Um, the young lady that, uh, overdosed, uh, on Cherish, um, I think that's a shame, and we should look more into the, uh, the drug addition in the Village of Hempstead, thank you.
Thank you, I'm referencing a person who, uh, overdosed in the alleyway next to one forty-five Terrace. One found, the next day, she actually still had the needle, and it's a tragedy we all regret, a female Hispanic in her late thirties.
Good evening, my name is Dorance Slaver, and I live in the Nicole, two sixty-one South Franklin Street in Hempstead. I'm gonna let her read to you what we put together for the budget for us with our modification of our taxes, and then I'm gonna speak to you from living in the building, being in the building, since I've, they've opened it up for rental units. And mine's is just gonna come for me as a human being, it's not gonna have anything to do with politics or anything of that nature, and what was promised to us when we moved in, and we are sat now. and what was promised to us when we moved in and where it's at now. So you go ahead.
We are residents at Lincolnville located at one hundred South Franklin Avenue in the village.
We are requesting. Two sixty one South Franklin Street. No, two sixty one South.
We are requesting the village assistance in addressing these issues and in particular are requesting that the village insert into a tax modification agreement that will permit Linda Knowles to continue with its current quality operation. We understand that there are financial issues that threaten the sustainability of the project and in turn the quality of life of the residents. We also understand that there are high quality of the current property tax structure of the project. While the owners have been successful in obtaining large annual tax reductions of thirty percent and more for the project, taxes go right back up. This is happening year after year, now for three years after year. The property tax returned to the high, to the high, very high levels. The effect is that there is no consistency with the tax is owned and this makes budgeting impossible. This kind of uncertainty and inconsistency has brought several hardship into this project. We are asking, what we are asking for as, for as an alternative to the vital, vital building, building cycle is a pre-defined structured tax scheme over time. This is the tremendous support, there is tremendous support from the residents of the building as well from other community members for this project and for the, for this requested assistance. Many of the current residents are longtime residents, former residents, and this project has finally provided the opportunity for the quality of life and dignity that all residents deserve. We ask the board, the village board, village board, village board consideration in granting the tax modification to Linda Knowles.
Could you read that sentence again? I'm sorry.
We ask village board consideration in granting the tax modification to village, to Linda Knowles.
Thank you.
So just so you know, so technically what the mayor has, has created is, is so if you, there's something on the agenda, you have the opportunity to come speak before it's spoken up on the agenda. We actually already voted yeses. I should say, so I can tell you now.
I know, just off first.
No, I know, that's what I'm just.
I saw the email that six thirty, come here and read this.
And besides, I was first time here, yeah. I had to build it.
Well, no, that's fine.
So we're in a learning process.
Yeah, this is my first time. I'm nervous sweating.
Okay, I'm done? No, I'm good. You just, you just, you just. I moved into the building, don't let them know, yeah, two thousand and fourteen when the rental unit opened up in October. When we went into there, we were told that we would have a general, we would have a computer room. We did, they would show it to us. We would have storage. It's there. It's never been used, never touched. Um, I've also held meetings in the building as trying to step up and be the president of the tenants association for the majority of the people in the building. Um, rent constantly goes up in that building.
I can't hear.
But it's the rent goes up and there's your income.
Hold on, hold on, let me, I'm gonna finish. Every time. No, it's not. It's an overall amount that goes up for everybody.
Well, I wish Mrs. Trina was here, but.
Oh, hold on. This, this is the other part about it because we as the tenants in that building are never communicated to about what's going on. We find out after it's done and then we have questions about what's being done. This daycare facility, nothing against it. I worked for College Children's Medical Center for nineteen years. I'm with the kids. But again, that was space that was taken from us. That was supposed to be for the building. That's fine. There's certain things that have to be done in order for buildings to stand. I understand it. But when it starts getting sloppy, it becomes a problem. We have an elevator right now that works in that building. Don't go to the third floor.
It doesn't go to the first.
Wait, no, no, we have two. One of them does not, hold on, one of the, um, elevators in the building does not go to the third floor. There's another one that you can't even get to the first floor.
Tell them about the door. Tell them about the door to get in the building. Tell them about the door. Ain't no handle. Ain't no handle.
You have to get the lock free one.
No handle on the door to get in the building.
We have a person, she just gave us some credit, she placed security.
We have security. We have security.
I'm on security here, so can handle the problem.
Okay, because we, we do have security in our building, but our security is limited to in the building. Let me finish. The door handle on our door not there. I personally don't have a problem with that because we try to keep the people from the outside of coming in. We have key pairs that allow us in. We have people in wheelchairs on the fourth floor. If there's a fire, I cannot leave my building unless I go next door because of my heart and get that lady next door to me out my building with me because she's in a wheelchair. And if it's a fire, I got to carry on my back down the steps because the elevator shouldn't be shut down. That's another problem.
Thank you.
Do we have some double box?
Wait, wait, let me, let me finish. We have one, one maintenance guy. We have a hundred apartments. The building has only been up for four days. Whether it's in that next budget or not, it's unfair to him. It really is. We have him doing everything. The floors don't stay clean. What I'm trying to tell you is no disrespect to nobody, but it's about to be another building that's gonna go down. There is nothing being maintained.
And you want people to bring their programs.
I appreciate you sharing this with me, um, Pete, have you been able to pick up what you concerned about?
Yeah, uh, how long has the elevator been down?
Ever, forever, since the building started opening. It's always been a problem with the building.
You know what, we have to repeat the lobby at the end of the room.
Yeah, the question will be.
The only thing.
Oh, that's not bad.
Hi, thank you.
Again, I'm going with communication. We as tenants don't know nothing until it's too late.
Incredible. It's hard, it's hard to.
Again, again, we're in a learning process.
Okay, if you go out to the lobby and share the information with, uh, Pete. Uh, Rachel, Emily?
Hi, guys. Hi, everyone. Um, I work here in the village.
Here in the.
Hi, guys. I work here in the village for a local contractor, steel contractor. However, we've been putting in bids to every job, Big Clinton, Bedell Street, Cooper. We haven't been able to get any jobs here. We can get jobs in Youngers, we can get jobs anywhere else but the village. No. We don't even deal with the city. We don't want any union problems. But it's just sad that we've been kicked out of the village. We were told that we can't do fabrication in a Zone B area, which was Main Street right next to Seductions. We were told we can't do business there, we can't fabricate there. Which is fine. No, we don't want any, we don't care about that. Our building was adjacent to Seductions.
What did he say? Okay.
It was in between the building that had burnt down and Seduction. So there a little hole in the wall right in the middle. But somehow we were making noise and Mr. Brown, Inspector Brown came and told us that we're operating a Zone B retail space that we're not allowed to, basically. So, which is fine. We moved it. We moved our business to a home business. But we're still not getting any jobs. We're putting out bids, we're spending money on bids, we're not getting any. And it's sad because it's done, you know? Sam Simpson, you know Sam Simpson, you know, he's right here in the community. He's been there for over ten years. It's no good. Why? He shouldn't get it. A small job. It, breaking down concrete, we can't even get that. I mean, you know, it's not a problem, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want us to fold. I don't want the business to fold because we have to scramble around for jobs outside of the community.
And the name of the company that's got that and stuff?
Ace Tech. Ace Tech Enterprises. A C E T E C Enterprises. We were located at three oh two Main Street. We're now located at sixty five Bellmont Parkway.
Thank you.
Alright. And the Linda Knowles situation, as you live there as well?
Yes.
There's no door handles, there's no elevators that work. I wouldn't recommend Percy Jackson to bring their programs there. The kids are disrespectful.
I made that recommendation a while back, but if you want to go in the lobby, you can, we'll state the list right now.
Oh, I don't know, I don't know who he is, but they come to the, they come to the building, they charge them to fix it or whatever repairs they do and again, breaks down.
It's a building inspector. If you give them a complaint, yell at them, go by and ask them, make sure it's repaired correctly.
Okay.
Thank you. But he's in the lobby person.
I'll be looking to hear from someone about something, a job, tearing down walls. I left the phone number there.
That's the number of.
That's my cell phone number. The business phone is forwarded to my cell phone number as well. So whichever, if you want the business file, I will send it to you.
I, I need a little bit of information so I can find out what happened to your bids. This week I actually vote on the bids and we go to a little bit, but well, it was.
I think she's talking about private bids, man, nothing municipal. I mean, she's took, she's mentioning addresses for private jobs, probably not municipal.
Private, private, um, fifty, Bedell Street and Main.
It's had nothing to do with.
Oh, you're, you're not talking about village, but that now.
Fifty Cooper Street is, is private as well?
Yes.
Private. Okay. Private meaning who has it?
Means they decide, not us.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, wait, ramps?
Yeah, we accent put you on the bid list for the future. This way when the bid comes up for public bid, you'll be considered.
Okay. Get me out of here.
Good evening. Good evening. Board of trustees, mayor, police chief. We know you're gonna get beat up a lot, right?
He can handle it.
He can. He's, he came up through the ranks. He's been here long enough, so. Alright, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask you not to respond to anything I'm saying because you're outnumbered by four of the bodies up there. And that's what the village charter said they're supposed to do. Make sure that whatever you sign off on is good and well for the community. Linda Knowles, in two thousand and twelve, anybody on this board back then?
Nope.
Yes.
Alright, they came to you guys, the mayor.
I'm not allowed to respond.
They came to, they, they came to you guys, there's a reason. They came to you guys and they basically said, we can't do what we plan to do, but we want you to give us the money. And you capitulated. You gave them the money. They went, they built what is going to quickly become what I call, way back then, another terrace avenue if it's not vigilantly watched. You've listened to the people? Look at the track record, the caller. They said, maybe this is perjurious if council goes back and retroactively pull the documents. Monteverdi and the rest of them asking the questions and being lied to. So this isn't low income housing. This isn't housing on a pilot project. We're not asking for any tax rebates from the village or the county. The project will pay its fair taxes.
Yeah, right.
Year one, year two, year three, year four, year five, year six, year seven, year eight, year nine, year ten, subsidized, village services, subsidized, village taxes. School taxes, that's a big number, should be even more impacting to the trustees sitting on the, my right, your left. Because they're hurting him and the quality of service he can deliver to the village residents. A good number of them will be domiciling in that same edifice over there. And what is supposed to be proportionately reciprocated in quality of life, a service to the goodwill based on the public interest and the public dollar being invested is again, not manifesting itself, not tangibly producing. I think if you don't give them the tax money, you could actually provide your own affordable housing through C D A. Stop giving pilots to these people. Don't give them pilots. Take your money and put it in your own bank.
Thank you.
That lady right there, she has the authority to function as a bank. I ask you for an additional minute, please. That lady has the capacity to function as a bank. She can have a recapture agreement. So if someone goes into some type of illness or other troubles, her agency can step in and do modifications on mortgages, affordable mortgages, Long Island Housing Partnership.
No, I was gonna say back in twenty twelve, I was on the board. That's why I did support. I remember what he said.
I, 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 look, I've been here since I was twelve years old. Anyone here that knows me knows two things. I'm very determined and I'm a little animated. I get frustrated very easy because they told me, get out the street, go and get educated and come back and serve. And I tell you all this, including the board, at every turn that I have tried to be a servant in this village, whether in an advisory capacity or a limited employment capacity, not which I advocate for. It's like, it doesn't make sense. Come on, folks.
You're a friend, Michael.
It ha, look, it has to make sense. If it's not adding up, it doesn't make sense. One additional point, that lady has the ability to facilitate as much affordable housing units in this village as you would like to have here, qualitatively and appropriately planned. So it's not ten pounds in a one pound bag, guys. At the end of the day, if you cluster. No, just indulge me for a moment. If you cluster, if you cluster new immigrants like my parents, when they needed to get a food stamp voucher to subsidize the economy of feeding me and my brothers and sisters when they first arrived here, working three jobs, if you cluster that, then there is no hope for that population. Because if you concentrate social need, if you concentrate economic dire times, what do you think's gonna come out on the other end of the formula? Crime, social decay, and economic destitution. But if you put people together with your taxes and subsidies for affordable housing and you put them together with twenty-five percent working class people who are on the way up and you put them together with someone else who's in the middle class status and you create that amalgamation, let me tell you what you'll have. You'll have a situation like Patterson News, which we sold for seventy-four thousand dollars per unit, affordable housing, and in that market it was unheard of. You could still do the same thing today. Long Island Housing Partnership, I'll identify twenty-five thousand right off the top. C D B G block rent funding, home monies, that's another guaranteed fifty thousand. You've just subsidized seventy-five thousand off of a new house in the village, just like that. C D A, the economic engine. You don't need to raise taxes on these people. Support her, give her the tools she need and tell her to go build it. Trust me.
Kathy, Mary?
Oh, come on now, give them some credit now. Y'all are just fun now.
We need to raise this with this. They need to settle the finances. They're giving away the money.
I need to have some business coming in. Let's see if we can have some good business. Good business. And good business.
Good evening.
Get your copy for us.
Excuse me?
Get your copy for us.
Um, 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 we'd like to discuss with you the, um, resolution of May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I was here at the meeting and, uh, if you recall, it had to do with, um, a statement from, uh, the Empire State Development Company, uh, which is from the United States, um, regarding the sewer problem in the community. And, um, a, a letter which was dated June, uh, two thousand and sixteen was presented, um, to Mayor Ryan. It was updated to two thousand and eighteen. And, um, it is to upgrade the sewer system, um, in the downtown area in order to, uh, provide for the redevelopment of the downtown. And at that meeting, a resolution, uh, was not read. A resolution was passed, but it was not read. And there was a lot of controversy before we vote. Um, it was presented as if only five million dollars was, um, the grant that was being discussed. And, um, the, uh, fact was that ten cent of the grant money, um, had to come, uh, from the village. And that would've been five hundred thousand dollars. And, um, when I spoke with, uh, trustee Daniels during intermission, he said that five hundred thousand was gonna come from the developer, which it's supposed to come from. Um, however, when I got the resolution. Um, however, when I got the resolution, because the resolution was not read at that meeting, although it was passed, the resolution is what I have passed out to most people here, and it indicates that, uh, this is not a five million dollar, uh, grant, it's a, uh, thirty-three million dollar, thirty-three million, seven thirty-four. Um, and that ten percent, not five hundred thousand, but three million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and forty dollars is, um, necessary, uh, for this to go forward. And if you look further into the letter that was, that, that this is related to, and you see that on page six, I think, it says the total, yeah, the total package here, because while this came from the ESD, the Empire State Development, that is five million. However, they added on, um, twenty-five, I mean, twenty-eight million plus, uh, from other sources. And that in signing off on this, Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, because you did sign off on it, right? Um, that you really were signing off for thirty-three million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And, um, alright, first of all, I'm really distressed over this, because at the meeting, first of all, the residency wasn't read, and secondly, um, it was presented as if it was only regarding a five million dollar grant. And it seems to me, from reading, um, the letter, which you signed off on, and it says, uh, you know, it says that "If you choose to accept our offer, please acknowledge your decision by endorsing the rest page, and include a two hundred and fifty dollar application fee." And that this is to accept this entire proposal, this is the letter. And the letter shows a five-year, uh, distribution of the funds. That, um, page three, um, shows how it's divided, you know, twenty percent for five years. And, um, it all adds up, if you add it up, five times six, seven million, then there's three point seven million. And I would like to know, um, have you met with the people, is this the, you know, the accompanying, uh, data on page five says, you know, that they're gonna get in touch with you, and, you know, what's the status of this, what is this all about?
And actually, I do believe the fellow bits are showing, remember the issue at hand was that we would have to put up three point five, maybe get five, which affected to me, that was one point five million dollar grant, which I raised at that meeting. But subsequently, we were able to use some other monies to offset the Hempstead portion. Would you be a fan of the, of the making?
So this relates to, uh, part of the report I gave earlier regarding the updated sewer study. So the thirty-three million dollars is a combined, um, project budget for the Nassau County portion as well as the Village of Pennstead's portion of the sewer improvements. And so, we had to approach it in phases. Number one, we had to get an updated sewer study to make sure that the numbers that were in the initial twenty-twelve sewer study and cost proposal for the revitalization of those project points to support the revitalization of the downtown area were accurate. Because the initial study was pre-sandy, and so as I mentioned earlier, the updated sewer study was completed in November of this year, showing, um, a, a overall cost of the improvements of being eight million dollars for the village portion of the project, largely in part because of the improvements that were already completed by Nassau County. So the next steps for us are now to take that updated sewer study and request that the non-state portion of the county's share of this thirty-three million dollar project be allowed to be leveraged with whatever additional fundings that will come from the, um, contributions of the local developers, the fair share mitigation contribution for infrastructure improvements, to leverage to meet that three point three million dollar, um, chip match that's required for the underlying grant. We've already been in conversations with the Nassau County PPW to access all the funds that they've expended to date to allow us to immediately draw, uh, over three million, it's probably more likely now to be closer to that five million dollar draw that we will be able to do. So it's just a matter of us going back to the state with the updated sewer study and request that the non-state source funds be allowed to be leveraged for the match in addition to the contribution of the developers. I think it's your question.
I think so, but I just want a conclusion and see if what I conclude is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I conclude from what you're saying?
Thank you, Sean.
That the, all the, the, uh, the needs in the sewer sector of the infrastructure are being covered in one way or another through this.
The majority, the vast majority, there'll be a small phase two that we'd have to seek additional funding for.
So that basically, what you're saying is that the sewerage that is needed for the downtown redevelopment is being taken care of and is in process, and it's very close to having all of it in place. Is that correct?
That would be fair.
Hey, thank you, I'll entertain the motion, you're going to the technical session. This is a personal issue, when we come back, we're not going anywhere, ladies and gentlemen, I'll say it, if you want to make your...